It's a 40 thou angle.
Yes, sir.
No problem.
That's perfect, thank you. So glad we're saying this. I've read it. He does.
Yeah.
Just don't let him know he's got all that.
No, they give him the button.
We'd like to.
In the Mayor Council.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So you might be asking yourself, why is the police chief talking about entertainment districts? As we kind of talked about in the discussion of all the things that could be of issue to any of us, one could be, especially if the entertainment district involves outside music or outside entertainment of some kind, might be particularly sensitive to our residents in Old Town. Whether they're actually already here, or we attracted them here because of new developments, redevelopments. And so my department deals acutely with noise complaints and concerns. So that's why we thought it was appropriate for me to do that. Plus Todd, come your head.
Let me kind of jump in on that. The overriding future issue is that if you are wanting to attract new development to the downtown area in particular, in the form of residential development, while you're simultaneously wanting to bring more hubs or restaurants that have entertainment or that might want to stay open until 2:00 AM or something like that, you have a potential for kind of a conflict between the two. You'll see this demonstrated in Fort Worth right now. Fort Worth had many, many locations downtown that had been there for many years, operating quite happily, and then as Fort Worth began to draw more residents downtown through some of their new developments, residents began to complain about that bar down asleep is kind of noisy and so just 2:00 AM. So the question is, what do you do to try to mesh those two uses harmoniously or harmoniously as possible without having to drag the police department into it every time somebody thinks that the music's too loud or at the wrong time of the day or something like that? So that's the purpose for this portion of the request from Mayor Hubert that we take a look at it. So that is the introduction.
Well, and then you just said, well, I want to take a look at it. It was called this and we had a conversation with both of them. We're talking about, we're moving along, we'll talk about it later, about the park over here, Old County Park Plaza. And we're hoping that that will stir some restaurants, patio dining things, and then they want to have some light music out there. They meant we have a band show in that park, and they want to have little small concerts there, or people sit out there and play their guitars and sing and stuff. So we need to have some kind of a fan put in place that would allow that, but like you said, the police haven't been called every time. Very good. So we'll talk a little bit about the state law and how our city ordinance reads currently, what those issues are there. I'm going to show you a chart that talks about the noise levels and what those testable levels are. We've got about three options for boundaries for an Old Town Entertainment District if you were to choose to do that. And I'll talk a little bit about enforcement issues. Real quick review about the surrounding cities and their ordinance, how they deal with it in places similar to what we're talking about doing here, and then looking to you guys for some information. So under state law, noise complaints are covered under disorder conduct. Yes, when you create an unreasonable noise in a public place that, you know, other than a little supporting range or interprivate residence, you have no right to talk to it, that's deemed, you know, disorderly conduct. Unreasonable noise is, well, I already kind of gave you that, but it also becomes a de facto unreasonable noise if they've been warned previously by magistrate or a peace officer and the noise level exceeds 85 decibels on the eight weighting scale. That becomes a de facto unreasonable noise. Now, doesn't mean that noise less than 85 decibels could also be deemed unreasonable? Yeah, probably, probably does. But I'll tell you this, in doing enforcement for a lot of years in Texas, peace officers like to have some kind of, you know, some objective kind of, you know, definition of what it is. They don't want any subjectivity in it if they can measure it out on the sound meter, and we do carry those around, by the way. If they can measure it out like that and use that as a guide to go by, they're going to likely do that. My guess, even the first warning, it's going to be something around that 85 decibels or something.
At what distance?
Well, it depends. For the state law, it's pretty wherever they can hear it from. Yeah, the further distance, obviously, the less decibel reading will be. In our city ordinance, we actually wore narrow for some distances that we made them from, and I'll show you that here in a second. We have a general statement in our city ordinance that talks about what that noise is prohibited. You're allowed for you to make or allow excessive or unnecessary noise in a volume, intensity, repetitiveness, or duration that is clearly audible that is offensive to a reasonable and prudent adult person within 100 feet of the noise source, or within any area, or any area within the traffic line of the car or lawn from which the noise or that source of noise is emitting, whichever is greater. That's the key thing that we keep in mind. We go further in the city ordinance under seven different subsections to talk about all types of noise that we say is being unnecessary and unreasonable. The one that most distinctly applies in this case, which is outside, we're doing the entertainment district, has to do with the radios, TVs, musical instruments, sound up, volume equipment, that kind of thing. And then there, we say that the playing of those things to such a volume that it's clearly audible to a person in his residence, and during these conditions, you're a day or night in a single family dwelling, it measures more than 65 decibel, okay? Or daytime in a multifamily dwelling, well, it measures more than 65 in adjacent units, or nighttime in a multifamily dwelling that where it's clearly audible within your unit. Now, another part of that also prohibits amplification of the human voice when the sound is clearly audible from 50 feet on the public property. Public property, if you recall, too, in a previous definition, public property is pretty much any property that the public or a substantial group of the public has access to. A lot of people think when you say public property, that means property owned by the government. Doesn't really mean that. It just means places where people can frequent pretty, you know, pretty easily, common areas, hospitals, shopping places, you know, any of that kind of thing.
Streets and sidewalks?
Yes, absolutely, streets and sidewalks. Prohibits also the operation of radios, stereo receiver, amplifier, sound up, volume equipment, all that stuff, in such a manner that it's clearly audible at the distance of 50 feet, or in such a manner that the vibration can't be plainly felt at the distance of 50 feet from the source, even if the vibration or base reverberation is felt inside a complaining person's residence perceptible without an issue. And we, yeah, we can allow those kinds of complaints. Of course, typically, this is great language in an ordinance, it's really difficult to enforce. Lots of times we get into situations where we'll be called about that, and we're pretty, we get there, the sound has quit happening, or we can't really feel it. Yes?
When you lay down and the blood settles in your head, you feel, in your head, your heart doesn't beat like that, or you don't hear it, but you feel that vibration from your head. It's kind of, I'm like that, I'm just going to tell all should lay down, right? Just lay down.
We actually do that. I don't think I've had a guy lay down before. Mention it will go to the residents.
This is the so-called auto boombox amendment that was done several years ago because of the auto is going to have the big bass speakers.
I was probably at a party next door.
But the bass speakers don't register on a desk with your low frequency.
And when you sit up, you don't hear it, feel it anymore. But when you lay down, well, they, you start to, it's still 12:00 in the morning, we're trying to sleep.
You know, this issue came to light seriously for us. Sneaky Pete's for years has had loud parties outside, and people across the lane there in the Old Town homes, they would feel reverberations, and really didn't, the loudness of the noise wasn't really perceptible much from inside, but they could feel the vibrations. And so a lot of reasons why we added this to our ordinance was so we could deal with those kinds of things, and we do have to deal with those sometimes. Another thing that's decided, that's also by the ordinance, to be deemed the loud or unreasonable or discerning noise in outdoor, is it possible where the volume is allowed to exceed seven decibels at the perimeter of that event? And just for point of reference, you know, we've done that in some of our city sponsored events, even though we're actually in the city ordinance, and we frequently don't exceed that seven decibels. So, you know, that's actually pretty good for us. And then listen to here, some of the exemptions for that, of course, city sponsored events that we're involved in, we do, horns or devices allowed by law that be sirens and such, bells and music boxes on ice cream vendors, city operators, city sponsored events, and athletic events conducted by L S D in the city. We have that for the big drum festival they did every year at the Louisville High School, of course, calls us great people. Here's some examples of some common noises and what their decibel level readings are. You can see traffic actually is pretty high between 7 to 80 decibels. That's typically a street level within, you know, 25, 30 feet perhaps. One interesting one, probably the reason why the state level is defined as it is, hearing loss begins at 85 decibels when it's prolonged and continuing for a quantum, you know, quantum time. OSHA has a lot of, you know, requirements for folks who work in environments like that. Anyways, some interesting things, jet engine at 100 feet, and gun blast 140 decibels, and they're obviously loud. So I'm going to show you three different boundary options that Nika and Patient put together for us, just to kind of give you an idea of what we're talking about. Boundary one, of course, would be, you probably can see the streets a little bit easier in this view. Here to the, here here to the, to the west, north to Walters, east over, you know, Mill Street to the north, Keely, as far east is over the, what's that, Henry, I don't know?
Harris.
Harris. And then now south to Elm Street. So that kind of gives you a sense of, you know, what that looks like. If we expand it a little bit more, you know, we do what I call the Chevrolet emblem, we make it a little bit further to the north, block it off to the west over there, and go a little bit further south, a little bit further east, where you can see the streets and the, particularly the zoning areas that are affecting here. And then, I don't know if you call this a paintball amendment or a phaser or what, but this really expands it so that it goes, you know, pretty far east down that Main Street corridor to the interstate.
That's a mosquito, Oopar. That's a mosquito. That's the gnawers in the woods.
Anyway, pretty far out west to the interstate, east out towards the railroad tracks, and then south along the Mill Street corridor.
Chief, which one of those gets the closest to the train station?
This one. Yeah, they trade for up there. Oh, the second one again, can you go back to the third one again? Okay, so anytime you allow noise outside, I'm going to tell you, you're going to get complaints. That's just a fact, it's going to happen. So if we were to do new things like the entertainment district that we're looking for, development or more outside music, entertainment, well, we're going to get more complaints about that. This is going to be a fact. But for a point of reference, I pulled together the calls that we answered for noise complaints in these three different boundary areas from 2011, and they're really pretty small. You'll notice that boundary option one and figure the same because basically those reporting districts were the same for both of those boundaries, and that boundary's different than what all reporting districts are. But then the expanded option is still on the other 10, that's really a pretty small amount of calls, of course, in a 12-month period, not too very much. The way it stands today, we have no change to laws or the ordinances on the books, officers that are responding have to decide which of those two apply. Is it the city ordinance that we're going to apply? Is it going to be state law? Regardless of what we do, enforcement must appear fair on space, and we have to be consistent about how we do it, you know? And again, that's the challenge that I have, is getting, you know, 139 guys to see it the same way and enforce it the same way. If we were to modify our city ordinance, either way, we can't really supersede state law. So the best control we really have over is our city ordinance to make the qualifications if we want to do that. So that takes us to what cities that do have events and outside things, what have they done about that? Frisco exempted all the noise from pizza Hut and Bar, and they did it on specific days during specific times. So they pretty much say from 7 to 11, Sunday through Thursday, and 7 to 11:30 on Friday and Saturday, you need noise elimination from there, pretty much exempt from the city ordinance. Again, for them, state law would still apply, so we have to deal with it. Talk to Chief Richall over there, and they have done some of that. For every song that's played after 11 or 11:30 at night, that's a ticket. And they drove to like 8 in one night, and they gave to a particular concert promoter or something out there for the songs that they did. So that's how they deal with it for us.
They just give a ticket, and that's how you take it and go?
I'm pretty sure they do. It's like, you know, 11:01, 11:30 at night, first song is a ticket, second song is another ticket, and so on. In Grapevine, of course, they had the Great Festival, we talked about that and all the music stuff, they made no changes at all to their ordinances whatsoever. And Chief Song, they go over there, tells me they get very few complaints if any. In fact, the residents that moved downtown in Grapevine moved there because of all that stuff, but they really don't get any complaints about that. I was super surprised. I figured it'd be one old person over there that's complaining about it. South Lake also has their big council event, they have a pretty standard Olympic ordinance that looks a lot like everybody else's, unreasonable noise or noises that exceed these decibel levels that they've set. You know, they're pretty conservative decibel levels, you can see those pretty quickly. But they may know, they may know the exception or exemptions at all for their council event or any other special events outside, not that I could tell from the ordinance. We've talked about it, Fort Worth is considering a change to theirs, or looking at something kind of like the North Richardson Hills ordinance, they, I think they're looking at some of those issues that they have, some of the things that have, that are based upon the zoning areas that they have in town. But they're not looking to take any action on that, or even to seek kind of posters from their staff until public march this year. But we'll, you know, we'll see what they're coming out with. The North Richardson Hills ordinance is pretty complicated, but again, it's arranged by zones. Their light industrial zoning is up to 70 dB from 7 to 710 and, or 10 dB, or actually 70 all the time. They have a medium industrial zoning requirement where they do the 65 from 7 to 10 dB, 55 from 10 dB to 7 AM. And then they have office neighborhood services and community services zoning where they do the up to 60, you know, up to 60 from, you know, daylight hours, basically 55 overnight. And then they have heavy commercial and, they help us to do that. Heavy commercial and some other kind of commercial zonings that they have where they have the 55 and 55 respectively. Arlington made no changes at all to their ordinance or anything due to their parks, but they're, they're pretty much geographically located where they're really, if they do create loud noise, it doesn't really carry into residential areas too often much. Flarmout has a ordinance real similar to ours, they either copied us, we either copied them, or we both copied somebody else. Our culture, Hightville, they just use a definition of unreasonable noise, and it's a little more restrictive at that time. They don't use any dB ratings at all for noise levels, so it's all susceptible, they're all they're set. So the way I see it, our options are really pretty limited. We change nothing that you want to, and just see what development comes, and, you know, decide to sit through something later. Again, it will be up to our officers that respond any kind of complaints about noise or loud music to decide if it's city ordinance based violations that we could work with or if we can use state law. We could outlaw all indoor and outdoor music except that those things that are sponsored, you know, which are already exempt from the city ordinance, please push back current establishments that do outdoor music and use around the city. We could exempt indoor and outdoor music, entertainment from the city ordinance and just in that Old Town Entertainment District, if we can establish it. State law would still apply to that, even if the noise is originally inside. And we all didn't think it's going to be a patio or maybe a rooftop in here or a band show or something, but, you know, literally, it could be, it could be abandoned inside of a club or a restaurant, and if it's loud enough that you can hear it from outside or adjacent unit, that's an issue that we still have to deal with. You know, part of that exemption from the city ordinance could require those venues to establish, you know, what, what complaints are going to be, and offer a mitigation plan on how they're going to deal with that. If they know they're going to interfere with the fire shop next door, maybe they make contact with them and decide how to, you know, how they're going to deal with that issue should it come. We could also adopt the Frisco model, the same exemption as we have number three, where we actually would set the limited days and hours on those days, just like Frisco does, only if we did it here, I would suggest, noon to 11, Sunday through Thursday, noon to 11:30 on Friday and Saturday. So ready, kind of puts it to you guys, do you want to do an entertainment district? If so, boundary options, you like? Or do you have another idea for options that we didn't show you for the boundary? And also, what do you prefer for, and just like noise complaints? We prefer number three or four, if you're asking me? Much really kind of your thought.
Go back to the options. No, 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 I'm sorry. No, no, no. The next last slide. Is that right? Because you said, your preference speaker.
Yeah. I'm good with either one of them.
I'm good. So the first question is, do we want to have an entertainment district? And then the second question is, if we do want to have an entertainment district, what rules do you want to govern, regulations on noise? Do you have any questions to say? Do you have any questions to say?
I have a question. Since we're talking about potentially developing a district here, and we're talking avoidance, would it be appropriate to throw out some other things that have come to mind, that would be considered under the realm of avoidance in this district now? Or are you just dealing with noise?
Well, if it would deal with the entertainment district, I guess it'd be okay, but I don't know if we're dealing with, like, building materials and stuff like that.
No, no, nothing like that. Well, basically, it's, it has to, one of the items is the parking on Main Street. And it was requested that we look at perhaps a parking time limit on Main Street. Apparently, it's the business owners to a degree that are taking up parking spaces, and, you know, we need to have something for the anticipated clients of those businesses. And I, and maybe it's been looked at in the past.
I think you could broaden this discussion to include that type of thing, because that is part and parcel of the same type of conflict that we're talking about, where you have people, I'll use the example of the Greenville Entertainment District in Dallas, where there's a lot of activity, but then it bleeds over into the residential areas nearby in the form of people parking in the streets and just looking for someplace to put their car while they go a block or two over to the local law or so. You have an entertainment district, I think the idea is that you want to encourage the entertainment, but then you want to have to deal with the side effects of the entertainment noise is one of them, parking could be another one.
So that could be added to this discussion?
I see why not.
All right. And the other item that I had was, the selfish and army apparently, in this process of doing the good work they do of feeding the homeless, well, it's, it's becoming an issue with some of the businesses in this area that the homeless are loitering in the area, napping, whatever the case may be. Is that another issue that we want to address now? Or is that something?
That, pardon me? I don't, it doesn't really have anything to do with the entertainment district, that couldn't happen anywhere in the city.
So that's something we discuss under, under ordinance or something?
Okay. So we did that. And I saw the correspondence you're referring to, and there is no law that you can pass against loitering on the Constitution.
Really?
Yeah. Please try.
There is no law.
The old loitering, you'll see a lot of cities that have those laws, in fact, I think we still have a law on the books that had to do with loitering, but you'll see those local ordinances that have that kind of language, but they've been found in the Constitution.
That's all I had.
Did you get, did y'all have anything, I know y'all said that in your first, did y'all even mean what that was?
I don't really, just being in support of the entertainment district.
You have a question?
Just comment, I think whether because of sound or other issues, as we develop this area and develop the park area there, and encourage development along Main Street to take in, you know, outdoor spaces and make use of them, sooner or later, we're going to want the Old Town Entertainment District. And just as a general concept, I think there's great merit in having a set of, well, having a definition for what the area is, and then as time goes by, my expectation is that not just sound, but other issues will be tied to that, to that boundary definition. As far as, since I have the floor, as far as what I like, I have to like boundary two, I have to like option four. So. And one of the reasons I like option four, by the way, is that, a little bit of concern about option three is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Option four.
Option two. Boundary two, option four.
Okay, option four.
Option four is.
Times.
As times.
Every day, every week.
Yeah. Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we implement the entertainment district boundary and then went with option three, for example, then in the middle of the day, somebody going through the neighborhood on a loud motorcycle, that might find their exempt.
No, I don't think so. We could style a change to the ordinance in that way, because there's, you know, the stuff about the radios and TVs and musical instruments is only one of seven areas in the city ordinance that we outlaw. Stuff about loud, you know, like loud equipment, you know, there's a bunch of other things that it prohibits. We wouldn't necessarily say that loud motorcycles would be exempt.
Let me, let me recast that then, what about somebody driving through the neighborhood with a loud radio?
Loud radio? Yeah, that could be exempt, unless we're very, unless we're very specific.
I just see a problem, and that's why I'd rather see the hours put on. Of course, not everybody's going to want to hear a car with a loud radio at 11 o'clock at night, but if you're getting, you know, if you're going to create the exemption for other loud music, then unfortunately, that's a side effect.
Yeah, I think we could style the change, any modification of the ordinance so that it was a little bit more specific, and didn't allow things like that to, you know, to be exempt, too, just because they have to be.
And based on style of music.
No, but maybe based on whether it's from a fixed location, something.
I tell you, usually it's not the volume, as much as it is the stuff that makes it.
Yeah. So anyway, those are my two purposes.
Good point. Any other questions to talk? Okay, so let's get this fast and direct, and do we want to do an Old Town Entertainment District?
I could support that.
I would.
Do we need a motion on that, or is it just more directional?
If y'all already do a motion, we can do it.
I would that we enact an entertainment district around boundary option number two.
One second, man. Okay, we have a motion, and we'll have a motion by Council Gilmore to do an Old Town Entertainment District for a boundary option number two, and a second, one second, I'm sorry. I missed a turn.
Could we separate those?
That's what we're doing. We're doing just the boundary right now.
Just the boundary?
Yes. And my question on this, we'll have a discussion, my question on this is, when we do this, would it really prohibit us, much as it's probably unique as both, would it prohibit us from expanding later on? If we decided we need to expand, we could expand it later day without causing problems? Okay, okay.
Talking about going all the way down Mill Street, down, down to the other.
I think to the train station.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, too. I was, that's probably.
But right now, there's nothing there. So that's why I was asking, could you extend that at a later date if it starts to develop down there? Could you put an extension there where it goes down?
Generally, speaking, probably want to start, because option two is a little bit broader, but you want to probably try to keep it as compact as possible until you actually have the need to go further. Reason being that you could actually stimulate some things, locations that you find out later on, maybe, maybe you didn't want to have there. And plus, you know, a district tends to be a fairly localized description, if it gets too broad, it starts looking more like a zone or a region as opposed to a localized, small, compact area. Fort Worth is even, they could actually make an argument, the entire downtown area is an entertainment district, but they're not doing that, they're looking at a much narrower focus, so I would say that you probably want it limited to where you have true entertainment today and then expand if you need to.
Yeah, to that, Elm Street right there, is that where the new condominium start? That below, just south or north of Elm right there?
This, this tract right here.
That's through the tract? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think, no, I think one of the north with Charles, that Mitchell Martin did.
It doesn't, is that where that?
That's what goes, it's north.
That's what's south.
No, south, I'm sorry, you're at south. Oh, south, I'm sorry, you're at south, south, okay, okay, so it's south there, okay. I didn't move it down there, did you?
You got, you got new townhomes over here, so.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm, okay.
You got, you got these townhomes here, but this is the, in fact, we got some over here in Pass, this is the oldie.
But you're not putting any in there?
No, but you're, you're exempting businesses from here, and it's largely where some of the plants become a part of. But that's not substantially different, you go back and find one, not a whole lot different.
Okay, any other discussion? Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now, what about enforcement?
And on this one, you could, if what you're directing us to do is come back to you with an ordinance, and see this again, so.
Tell me one. You say, you're for chief, option three or four?
Three or four, I'm, I'm fine with.
I, I know four kind of just defines the time, which is nice. What is the, what time does three all?
Exactly, exactly. I mean, really four, from an enforcement standpoint, if I'm the guy answering the call, that, that time period gives me a little bit of leverage for both parties, it tells the complaining person, look, by eleven o'clock, they got knock out a lot.
This suggests that it came from district.
Right, it's always coming from the entertainment district.
Outside the entertainment district, all the other rules apply.
Right, but what's gonna happen, if somebody adjacent to the entertainment district is gonna complain about the noise, you know, the loud decision, so they're gonna call us, like with the oldie home, let's use that as an example, they call us, and we tell them, well, look, they're allowed to go until eleven, you know, until eleven P M tonight, you know, call us back. If it's a level one, you stop your plane, and we'll go over and we'll run up tickets or tell them to shut up, or, or whatever we have to do.
So you need a motion for direction?
Well, yeah, which one you kinda want us to focus on, we have to address, like, which is, we're.
I'd, I'd like, like to move the staff brings us an option four, with some case of times.
A motion by Council Gilmore for staff to agree. Option four, and seconded by Council Brenna. Any more suggestions? All in favor? I oppose, most carries. Thanks, chief, good work, appreciate all that.